Good evening and welcome. The time is now six thirty, excuse me, 5:30 PM, and I would like to call the July 17 through 19, 2023 meeting of the Energy Facility Siting Council to order. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Marcy Grail.
Present.
Kent Howe.
Here.
Jordan Truitt. I think Councilmember Truitt said he might be running a little bit late. Cindy Condon.
Here.
Ann Byer.
Here.
Richard Devlin. You have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary, are there any agenda modifications?
Madam Chair, no agenda modifications at this time.
Thank you. I have the following announcements. For tonight's public hearing, there are three ways to let us know you are interested in providing comments to the council. For those in person, please fill out a registration card available on the table and submit to Sarah Esterson. For those using the WebEx, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature. For those on the phone only, you will need to press star three, which will alert us that you want to speak. We will go over these again during the public hearing. For council members and anyone addressing the council, please remember to state your name clearly, and please do not use the speakerphone feature as it will create feedback. Please mute your phones, and if you are joining us by phone and receive a phone call, please hang up from this call and dial back in after finishing your other call. For those signed onto the webinar, please do not broadcast your webcam. If you want to receive future email notifications of council meetings, project milestones, or rulemakings through our Click Dimensions program, you can do so by clicking on the right link, excuse me, clicking on the link in the agenda or on the council webpage. Look for the green box on the right-hand side of the page that says Sign Up for Emails Updates. You may also sign up today on the computer near the entrance to the room. You are also welcome to access the online project mapping tool and any documents by visiting our website. Please note that the audio and video of this meeting is being recorded and may be posted to the council's website following the meeting. Energy facilities citing council meetings shall be conducted in a respectful and courteous manner where everyone is allowed to state their positions at the appropriate times, consistent with council rules and procedures. Willful, accusatory, offensive, insulting, threatening, insolent, or slanderous comments which disrupt the council meeting are not acceptable. Pursuant to Oregon Administrative Rule 345-011-0080, any person who engages in unacceptable conduct which disrupts the meeting may be expelled. Because I've previously recused myself from the Boardman to Hemingway project, I'm now going to hand the remainder of tonight's meeting over to Vice Chair Howe. Vice Chair Howe.
Chair Grail. Do I need to find out if people online can hear okay?
Councilmember Howe, this is Patrick Rowe. We can hear you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Rowe. So, tonight, we have the Boardman to Hemingway Transmission Line Public Hearing on draft order, draft proposed order on request for a site certificate amendment one. Kellen Tardiwether will provide, the senior citing analyst will provide facility overview. I will act as the presiding officer over the public hearing. And then, the public hearing, we will conduct following this brief introduction of the agenda item. This is the public hearing on the draft proposed order on the request for Amendment One for the Boardman to Hemingway Transmission Line Site Certificate. I, Kent Howe, Energy Facility Siting Council Vice Chair, am serving as the presiding officer for this hearing. Hold on just a second. Restart now, picket. Okay. Today is July 17, 2023. The time is now 5:35. This public hearing is being held at an Energy Facility Siting Council meeting in person at the Best Western Sunridge Hotel Conference Room in Baker City, Oregon. This hearing is also being held via a WebEx webinar with a call-in option for those who cannot participate in person or via webinar. Kellen Tardiwether, Senior Siting Analyst at the Oregon Department of Energy, will provide an overview of the amendment process and changes proposed in the amendment request. Ms. Tardiwether, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Chair Howe. Oh, my gosh. My voice is so loud. There we go. For the record, Kellen Tardiwether, Senior Siting Analyst, Oregon Department of Energy. I am, I have Nancy in the back of the room. For those of you who are online and calling in, thank you for attending. She's going to be running my presentation, so if there's a little bit of pauses or if we go back and forth with the slides, just bear with us. I may or may not have forgotten my computer back at the office. Everything's fine. So, as Vice Chair introduced, I'm going to be leading off the information item with a project overview, and then we're going to transition into the first of two hearings on the request for Amendment One and the draft proposed order on request for Amendment One for the Boardman to Hemingway Transmission Line. Next slide, Nancy. So, this is an overview of what this evening is going to look like. And for those of you online, we have, we have, we have some folks here in the room. We have some members of the public and the agency, but people may be filtering in here. And then, when we get to the hearing portion, we'll kind of see who's interested in commenting, and then allot time from that portion. But really, this part of my presentation should be, should be pretty quick. I'm going to do a facility overview, which includes just a summary of the approved facility, and then a summary of what request for Amendment One is. I'm going to provide an overview, or the Vice Chair Howe is going to provide an overview of the hearing. Vice Chair Howe and I are going to say a lot of similar things. And, and for those of you who participate in the process, there'll be familiar words, but they are very important. That's why we go over them a couple times. Then we'll get to the hearing where the certificate holder, Idaho Power, will be provided an opportunity to comment on the draft proposed order. Members of the public will be provided an opportunity to provide oral comments. And council will be provided an opportunity to ask any clarifying questions of the certificate holder. And then, lastly, the certificate holder will have an opportunity to respond to anything raised this evening. The written comment period also is still open, which I, next slide, please, Nancy, which I'll, I will comment on those options that exist for people to comment. So, just real quick, for those who may be new to the citing process, Nancy, can you click one more time? The Energy Facility Siting Council, EFSEC, or the council, provides, is, provides a consolidated review and oversight for large-scale or utility-scale energy facilities across Oregon. The council is made up of a seven-person, governor-appointed and Senate-confirmed regulatory body, who is the decision-maker on these large energy projects in Oregon. The council members come from all over Oregon and come from a wide array of backgrounds and serve terms. So, for folks who track with council processes, projects, they see the council members change over time. Myself and other, other, my colleagues in the Siting Division at the Oregon Department of Energy serve as staff to the council, so we do, like, technical, legal review, project management, and do things like we're doing here tonight. Next slide, please, Nancy. And then, one more click. So, this is our, in the room, this is a little bit hard to, hard, hard to read. The screen's a little bit small. But, but folks are kind of used to seeing our process Chevron. This very much mirrors the same processes for an application for site certificate. All applications and amendments originally are submitted in a preliminary state, and they go through a completeness review where there's information requests sent to a certificate holder. They provide responses. This back and forth goes on until the department determines that the information in the amendment is sufficient for the department to draft findings and conditions of compliance in the draft proposed order. And then, when we deem the amendment complete, we then use that information to draft findings and recommendations in the draft proposed order. We issue that, which stems a comment period. And then, there's in-person hearings, which leads us here. And then, the next steps after are, we would issue, and I will go over these more in my presentation of the next steps. But folks, folks who are new to the process, one of the things we'd really like to highlight is this is obvious, where the red Chevron, we're in the middle, so we're not towards the end. There's still more steps to go. Next slide, please. Okay, so, the Boardman to Hemingway Transmission Line is an approved facility. Council approved the final order and issued the site certificate last September, so we're just under a year here from that blast from the past. And, so, the facility, again, the map is kind of small. It includes approximately 273 miles of mostly 550 kilovolt transmission line through five counties in Oregon. There are several alternative routes that are also approved. And then, there are rebuilds of some segments of the line that are included in the approval as well. Related or supporting facilities that are approved include multi-use areas, which are like temporary construction sites, 299 polling and tensioning sites, 10 communication stations, and then, two communication stations associated with the Morgan Lake alternative. And then, another important related or supporting facility, you know, particularly as it applies to Amendment One, are, are roads. So, access roads, which can be temporary access roads or permanent access roads. But roads are related, approved related or supporting facility to the transmission line. Next slide, please. So, what are we looking at in request for Amendment One? So, similar to how Idaho Power originally proposed in the application and what council approved, Idaho Power, what council approved is, was the approved route and then alternatives, which gave, gives Idaho Power, if they're approved, the flexibility to choose one or the other, ultimately, when they build, when, in final facility design and build out the facility. Here, as represented in request for Amendment One, as Idaho Power works with landowners and gains access to do surveys and landowner negotiations, a lot of that has necessitated moving some roads or routes around properties, which, if it moves outside of what was that previously approved site boundary, that means they have to add that area and through an amendment process. And so, how Idaho Power has framed it in a request for Amendment One is just adding more options. So, these are functionally adding more areas when ultimately, they will be able to pick from anything that is approved, if these are approved. So, RFA I includes 8.8 miles of transmission line alternatives, one in Morrow County, Baker County, and Malheur County, and then approximately 45.9 miles of newer substantially modified roads in all of the counties. RFA I also includes certificate holder-proposed amended site certificate language, and that's the, that, that is in RFA I. In the draft proposed order, as folks read through it, they'll see that the department also makes lots of recommendations for, you know, a lot of, as minor adjustments. Some of them maybe are more significant. And the rationale for the department's recommended condition revisions are provided in the draft proposed order as well. So, that is part of what you'll see in the DPO. Next slide, please. Yeah, kind of hard to see. Folks, folks online can probably see this better than we can in the room. I wanted to walk through each of, each, just kind of show each of the alternatives. So, this is the Little Juniper Canyon in Morrow County. As you, so, the shaded area is the, the site boundary transmission line route that council previously approved. And then, the darker, the darker outline of a little, kind of a little southwest of that shaded area is this alternative. So, as you can see, really, it's just, it's in kind of very similar proximity. We're just really moving some things around. And what I really wanted to highlight in here, because I don't have, like, a lot of maps showing roads, but there are roads kind of built in here. You can see them kind of winding through. And a lot of them connect up with a previously approved road associated with the approved route. Next slide, please. And then, yeah, there, there we go. Okay, and these are kind of going to stack up. And this is the True Blue Gulch Alternative. It's kind of hard to get them all on one, but it kind of goes down into an L and bends. It's like an elbow that comes off of the originally approved route. Oh, kind of going back, the Little Juniper Canyon is a 1.4-mile alternative. But if, if, you know, functionally, if Idaho Power did that instead of the segment of the approved route, it would be 0.1 miles longer. For the True Blue Gulch Alternative, it is a 4.6-mile alternative route. But if that was selected, it would be 1.3 miles longer than the approved route portion. And then, the next slide, please. And then, this is the Durbin Quarry Alternative down in Malheur County. And this alternative is 2.8 miles. And then, the associated segment it would replace from the approved route is also 2.8 miles. So, there's no difference in distance with this one. And again, very much in the same proximity, a minor adjustment from what was previously approved. And this is being proposed, which was actually raised in comments from ODOT in the application phase, but it is to avoid impacts to an ODOT rock quarry. Next slide, please. Okay, so, council's rules for amendments are in Division 27. So, under OAR 345-027-0375, that has the scope of council's review. And this is what council, well, staff and council, what council looks at, depending on the type of amendment. So, this is where, if you had an amendment to transfer a certificate holder, you would look here, and it would kind of, it would tell you what you're looking at. So, for an area, for a, an amendment that adds an area to the site boundary, the scope of council's review, and I should have included a couple words before here because it says that, the portion, but it's basically, it leads off with, you know, council's task is to find that the preponderance of evidence demonstrates that the portion of the facility within the area added to the site boundary by the amendment complies with all laws and council standards. Applicable to an original site certificate application, what that means is kind of like, to the, the laws that are in place now. Right? So, that's what we look at. All of those, all, just those areas added have to comply with all laws in place now. And so, kind of going back with preponderance, preponderance of evidence is, you know, more likely than not that it would meet the applicable laws and standards. And then, wanted to note here, and if you're familiar with the draft proposed order, we talk about the record a lot. In this amendment, and pretty much for any of council's approved facilities, the record still applies to amendments. And we do look back, and we can use that information. So, in this case, as everybody's very familiar, the record is very voluminous and includes the application for site certificate, the information from the contested case. And now, the record would include RFA I. Under the council's scope of review, council also looks and ensures that the letter bond of, letter or bond of credit is adequate. Next slide, please. This is a timeline. Where were we? How did we get here? Don't need to go over this in a lot of detail. We issued the, the draft proposed order on June 14 for a 34-day comment period. And right now, the, the record is scheduled to close at the conclusion of tomorrow night's hearing in Pendleton. And then, right now, council, once the record closes, the next process step is for council to review the draft proposed order. And that's scheduled for Wednesday right now, if the record is not requested to remain open. Okay. Next slide, please. So, a lot of folks who participate in the process are familiar with this slide and kind of familiar with these steps, and that's why we're here tonight. But for folks that are new, so when we issue the draft proposed order, the draft proposed order, DPO, is really staff's first cut at what are, at our recommendations. It, it is a draft. So, it goes out, and people get to comment on it. Agencies get to comment on it, counties, members of the public. So, that is ongoing. We have lots of different ways you can comment. You can email me. We have a comment, we have an online way to comment. You can deliver comments to the ODOT office or here in person. And then, you can also just provide your comments, oral comments. We are recording this, and the recording, we will post the recording to the webpage as soon as it's ready. Next slide, please. So, these are, these are the, you know, the, the boundaries or stipulations associated with commenting on the record here. So, if, if we don't get your comment before the record closes, before the conclusion of the public hearing, council cannot accept your comments on the record. They will not be added to the record. People commenting on the DPO during the, and this is why commenting on the DPO is important. It retains your ability to request a contested case later on in the process steps. So, these are, so, to be considered in the contested case, which means that this kind of applies to this evening. So, you have to, the, the issues raised in your comments must be submitted within the timeframe, so before tomorrow night. They have to be within the jurisdiction of the council, so it has to be something that council has authority over. And the comments and issues must include sufficient specificity, which means they have to be provided or supported with facts and, and well enough for the council, the department, and the certificate holder to be able to understand the issue and to be able to respond to the issue. So, that's what sufficient specificity is, is to provide facts. Next slide, please. Now, as those of us who have been participating for a while, we remember that we had a, a long and really fun contested case for this project. And so, we really want to reiterate that the, the threshold is different when we're talking about amendments. For an application, there is an automatic contested case for every application for site certificate. When we get into amendments, a Type A amendment, the threshold is a little bit different, and the process is a little bit different. So, and kind of going back to my, my Chevron slide, so we're going to, we issued the draft proposal. There's the comment period. We're having these in-person hearings. The record will close. Council will review the draft proposed order. What the department does, would take, the department takes all that information, all the public comments we received, comments from council, direction from council, responses from the certificate holder, if they supplement the record and add more. And we, we build all of that in, in a track-changes redline format into a proposed order. And so, the proposed order is the document that reflects everything that's happening during, you know, the, these next couple days in the comment period. And then, when we issue the proposed order, we'll issue a notice of an opportunity to request a contested case. And that will have details about the items that an individual must include in its request for contested case, to which then it goes to council. So, and so, when council is looking at those requests for contested case, this is the questions that council is asking itself. And it's, and this is, this is from the rule. It says, "Council must find that the request raises a significant issue of fact or law that's reasonably likely to affect the council's determination of whether the facility with the changes proposed by the amendment meets the applicable laws and council standards." And this is kind of going back to that scope of, scope of council's review. Is what we're looking at, is the council must determine whether the preponderance of evidence on the record supports that the portions of the facility meet the council's standards or rules. Secretary Cornett and our communication team have put together a nice, just short 10-minute PowerPoint presentation going through the contested case process for an amendment and how to request a contested case and discussing these thresholds. It's available on, it's, a link to it is in the notice, and then, it's also available on our webpage. So, if council does receive requests for contested case, the options for council are to hold a contested case on properly raised issues, kind of going back that meet those criteria before. Council can also remand the proposed order back to us, the department, and with direction about how to address the issues raised in the, you know, petition for the contested case. Or council can deny the request for contested case. Next slide, please. And which I believe, and so, Vice Chair Howe is going to go through. You're going to hear some of the same things that I said, but it's, it's important, and it's part of the presiding officer. But we are now moving into the hearing portion. Thank you. I'm going to...
Ms. Tardiwether. Not very loud. There. The public hearing for the B2H Transmission Line Request for Site Certificate Amendment One is now open. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public, reviewing agencies, council, and the certificate holder, if they wish to do so, to present oral and written testimony on the amendment request and the department's draft proposed order. The 34-day public hearing comment period on the draft proposed order is scheduled to close at the conclusion of the hearing tomorrow night in Pendleton. Next slide, please. At the conclusion of the presentation, I will call on each person interested in providing oral testimony, starting with the certificate holder, then people in person, then on the webinar, then on the phone. Tonight's hearing is being recorded. The presentations, written comments, and oral testimony are part of the decision record for the amendment request for the facility. Next slide, please. Pursuant to OAR 345-027-0367 sub 5A and B, please note the following. A person who intends to raise any issue that may be the basis for a contested case must raise the issue in person at the hearing or in writing, written comment submitted to the Department of Energy before the July 18, 2023 deadline, and with sufficient specificity to afford the council, the Department of Energy, and the certificate holder an adequate opportunity to respond, including a statement of facts that support the person's position on the issue. In the Type A review amendment process, to justify a contested case, issues must be determined by the Energy Facility Siting Council to raise a significant issue of fact or law that is reasonably likely to affect council determination of compliance with an applicable standard. Next slide. To raise an issue in a contested case proceeding, the issue must be within the council's jurisdiction, raised in writing or in person prior to the close of the close of the record of the public comment period, July 18, 2023, raised with sufficient specificity to afford the council, the Department of Energy, and the certificate holder... the Department of Energy and the certificate holder an adequate opportunity to respond. To raise an issue with sufficient specificity, a person must present facts that support the person's position on the issue. Next slide. For any individuals wishing to provide testimony during tonight's hearing for the record, please include the following with your testimony. Full name of spelling, physical mail or email address. Next slide. So is a certificate holder here tonight and do they wish to provide testimony? Okay. And I guess they wouldn't be remote.
For the record, Todd Cornet, um, the certificate holder is in the audience, just not intending to provide comment at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, public testimony, are there any individuals in the room that wish to provide public testimony? Please remember to fill out a registration card available on the table and submit to Sarah Esterson. And I have one, uh, that she's brought me and Irene Gilbert has, uh, signed up. So Irene, ready for your testimony?
Okay. Anyway, I wanted to comment on just a couple of general things before I get into my actual, uh, comment regarding testimony, but, um, my name is Irene Gilbert, G.I.L.B.E.R.T. and I'm here as the representative of, of Stop Boardman to Hemingway, the nonprofit. Also, I'm here appearing as a person representing the public interest, uh, as I did in the initial site certificate and also as representing myself as an individual. One comment just starting out is when the, um, when the council members ask for specificity, it's really difficult to provide some specific examples of some of the issues when the maps don't provide enough detail so that you can really tell what's going on. I mean, when council, uh, rules require things like setbacks and, and that sort of thing, the maps that are provided, uh, you zoom in on them and you just get a bigger picture of something that doesn't have any details. And, and with the technology that's now available, I would think that it would be possible to have the maps allow you to zoom in and actually see the details of where these different changes are occurring. Certainly with things like road locations, it's really important to be able to see where those roads actually are appearing. The, um, one other thing is I'm concerned about the stated scope of the comments as it relates to changes in the site certificate conditions. Uh, the, um, it was noted that the changes or the, the application, the, uh, request for amendment one was basically limited to commenting on the area that's changed with the amendment. But according to the rules, I believe it's rule number three in the ones that, uh, Calvin was going over, it says that when there is a change in a site certificate condition, the public has the opportunity to comment based on the impacts to the entire facility. So I am concerned that people may believe that they had to be focused on just the, uh, area of the new, uh, amendment, when in fact, the rules allow them to comment just generally. And for one example would be, uh, the fire, fire plan. Because of it being a change to the site certificate condition, the public is allowed full access to the, in, to comment on the entire facility and the impacts to the entire facility. So I'm, I'm not sure how to deal with that. I kind of feel that people ought to have an opportunity to perhaps send in comments and writing after the close tomorrow if they weren't aware and they, I don't know how they would be aware if they weren't reading the specific rules because it does not state the difference in the, uh, notice to the public. I'll leave that to you folks to discuss. So, um, getting into my comments here, as you know, I have had a lot of angst about the treatment of timber and grazing zones and the com- combined zones and, and whether or not the site certificates are allowing for protection of those areas. And, um, actually I had hoped to get that before the Supreme Court, but because I'm an idiot, I, uh, I didn't get it in timely. So, but what I want to talk about now is Forest Practices Act. And many of the issues that caused me concern regarding the Union County ordinance, um, failing to provide protection for forest lands actually are covered under this Forest Practices Act. And I know that, uh, council member Devlin could no doubt give you a, a much better, uh, statement about the, uh, sort of the politics of the current Forest Practices Act. And I don't know, maybe some of the rest of you also are involved, but just briefly, um, the language of the Forest Practices Act was adopted October 26th, 2022, and it implemented Senate bills 1501, 1502, and House bill 4055, and the private forest accord report dated February 2nd, uh, 2022. The, um, so this act is in the rules. It is officially in the rules and there are some implementation dates. All of them have passed with the exception of the last piece is going to be implemented January 1st, 2024. So, um, it's five months from now. The, um, the issue is, um, you know, the, the governor was very concerned about the fact that there were some, um, the public was going to have initiative, an initiative process to get some of these issues on before the public for a vote. And so she, um, I'm talking about Governor Brown here, pulled together a whole bunch of people from, from timber and, you know, resources and wildlife and, and they came up with this agreement to avoid, uh, having the initiative process implemented. So I wanted to go through some of the requirements of this because the Forest Practices Act applies to every forest in this state. And I'm not going to read the, uh, rule numbers to you, but I will include them when I send this in in writing prior to your deadline, um, tomorrow afternoon. And many of the requirements of this rule apply to this amendment. They also apply to every site certificate, uh, every development that's being done that's going to in any way, uh, involve the removal of trees. So, uh, but I like about this rule is it provides very specific requirements for all forest activities that involve the removal of timber. And the definitions and the, uh, requirements are very clearly laid out in the statute and the rules. And I just wanted to kind of go over what some of those are. Again, I'll include the reference numbers when I send this in. But forest land is defined as land which is used for growing and harvesting of tree species. And it says regardless of how the land is zoned or taxed, or how any state or local statutes, ordinance, rules or regulations are applied. So it basically, um, trumps anything as far as other agencies and their decisions about dealing with forest land and, and removing, um, timber. And it also defines forest land. It says, any forest land capable of annual wood production of at least 20 cubic feet per acre is subject to the reforestation rules. So that's if you want to, you know, say it was part of the argument that I had with the combined land. And here they're using that same definition, 20 cubic feet of, uh, timber per year, they're subject to reforestation requirements. Now, some of the other things in this rule is there are several requirements for written plans. And they're required for any forest operation occurring within 100 feet of a stream determined by the state forester to be used by fish or for domestic use or a significant wetland. So it kind of brings in a broader definition. They're not talking about threatened or endangered here. They're saying any stream that is, uh, if they're within 100 feet of a stream that has fish in it, then these, they have to have a written plan. It also says that they have to have a written plan for areas at risk from road generated materials entering the waters, roads constructed in riparian areas, constructing or reconstructing any water crossing or roads constructed in critical locations, including those within 50 feet of stream channels or lakes or within significant wetlands. And the rule again gives very clear definitions of what it means when they say a critical location, uh, et cetera. So all roads in critical locations require a written plan. Anytime there's going to be a conflict with sensitive wildlife species, it also requires a written plan. And I'll go over those, uh, wildlife species that are considered sensitive in the areas of protection in this, uh, Forest Practices Rule. It says drainage must be implemented per the Forest Practices Technical Guidance Regarding Road Drainage Rural Compliance. And what the Forest Practices Act is getting at is they don't want drainage going directly into the water sources for things like roads that are near, um, water sources. The, um, it also, I found this interesting, regardless of the intent, and this applies for, I think for Idaho Power directly, uh, regardless of the intent to obtain or the issuance of an approval of an alternate practice, this does not exempt the developer from complying with the Forces Practices Act through the removal of existing timber. So what the, the rule says is you follow it, all of the requirements until the, uh, timber has been removed and then you can apply the alternate practice to avoid reforestation of the site. Under wildlife protection, um, and also I'm not going over it today because I didn't spend enough time studying it, but Forest Practices Rules also have some information about fire protection requirements that, um, I'm sure you can go through on your own. I hope you go through. Um, the, um, Forest Practices Act protections apply to wildlife listed as threatened and endangered by ODFW or federally listed. And so here it's not just state, uh, wildlife species, it's also federal. And they provide protection for sensitive bird nesting, roosting, watering sites, um, that are identified in the Forest Protection Act. And it specifically goes over, uh, particular species and what, uh, what those sites involve. The, it also provides protection for significant wetlands and part of that is the written plan. It provides protection for critical wildlife or aquatic habitat sites listed in the cooperative agreement between the Board of Forestry and Fish and Wildlife Commission. The, um, the protected species that are specifically addressed in the Forest Practices Act include the northern spotted owl, bald eagle, osprey, great blue heron, golden eagle, marbled marlet and bantailed pigeon. The specific requirements include, and they are species, they are species specific. So for spotted owl, it requires 70 acres of suitable owl habitat. And that's defined by rule as habitat that is, um, utilized by the species that, that they're protecting. And in most cases does not allow timber harvesting. It also provides a protected time between March 1st and September 30th as a timeframe when disturbance is least tolerated by them. Bald eagle protection also has some specific, uh, requirements. For them, the area that's to be protected is 330 feet from the nest site. And also there's a do not disturb area of 600 feet for you and 600 feet. And also, um, you can't have an aircraft within 100, pardon me, 1,000 feet of a bald eagle nest. And operations are also restricted from January 1st to August 31st. The osprey, um, does not allow forest operations within 600 feet of an active nest tree between March 1st and September 15th. And I'm sure you can see from what I've gone over so far, that there are some real conflicts here with things like, um, like a site certificate that's not protecting the nest site. And the other piece of this is for these protected areas, it doesn't matter if the bird is in the tree or not. You're, you don't cut down a nest tree in most instances here. I mean, there are some specific statements such as, I believe for the golden eagle, it says if the nest site hasn't been used for five years, then it, then you can assume that it's abandoned. But there, the issue is they want these birds to stay in the areas that they're in and not to be moved out of them. Another one is the great blue heron. Forest operations are not allowed within one quarter mile of an active nest tree. And the dates for that are February 15th to July 31st. And a 300 foot area around the outermost nest tree is required. And there they, they talk about, you have the site of the, um, of the nests, but you also have some important perching, uh, locations that are, are right near there where the fledglings, uh, are utilizing them. I'm, I didn't write down exactly which ones, but for many of these, the restrictions don't allow you to remove the nesting tree and others in the areas, even if it's not active. I mentioned that. The, um, the act provides clear definitions of the terms that are used here, such as nest tree, nesting territory, resource site, um, et cetera. And county land use rules can't preclude the role of the Oregon Department of Forestry and Forest Practices requirements. So, um, the reason I'm bringing this up is because in the site certificate, there's a lot of talk, I can't believe I'm losing my voice. This is not good. Um, anyway, it discusses, um, there's a lot of discussion about the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and their approval of things like, um, like crossings of, uh, streams and rivers and that kind of thing. And some of those, uh, you know, the Department of Fish and Wildlife really makes some subjective kinds of decisions about those things. The Forest Practices Act is not, um, not open to interpretation by, um, basically. So when you're talking about stream crossings and you're talking about dealing with these wildlife species, the, uh, site certificate clearly has some conflicts that are, um, the amount to waiving the Forest Practices Act if that were the allowed, and it isn't allowed. The statute, um, and the governors made it really clear, this is, um, this is going to be, this is the law. It, another thing that I think is useful, it says road construction and maintenance rules shall apply to all Forest Practices regions unless otherwise indicated. So they're saying this applies throughout the state. It's, it's not a county specific kind of rule. The, uh, the concern that I have is, um, the fact that there are several areas where the site certificate is, is not in compliance with these. And, and it's because the maps are so bad as far as being able to tell details, I can't give you specific areas, for instance, where, where the road is going to be within, um, too close to the water resources and that sort of thing. Although I did, you know, what I can tell by looking at the maps is it appears that there are roads that are literally right on top of, um, water resources. There are also some, um, some areas where they're doing, uh, preparing thing, you know, there are multiple use areas that look like they butt right up against water resources. And if going through the, the site certificate, it, I went through for each of the counties and what the setback distances were listed. And for, um, for Baker County, there's nothing listed. Uh, for Malheur County, there's nothing listed. For Union County, I believe it's 25 foot setback from water resources and with, um, I believe it's the same for Umatilla County. But those aren't gonna work for, uh, for, based on this rule. Let's see. Guess that, I guess I'll just leave you with the thought that, um, your final. I guess I'll just leave you with the thought that your final right-of-way clearing assessment that's referenced in Gen LU 13 needs to be updated to include these requirements. The site certificate needs to incorporate Forest Practices Act, and a failure to do so really puts the council and the developer at odds with some strong political concerns and political resources that have been committed. And they've all given and taken certain things to develop these rules. And I know that there would be a reaction if you're authorizing site certificates that are not complying with this rule. One other comment, just roads and associated structures, access in construction areas, none of that was looked at in the environmental impact statement. So there's currently nothing about it. As far as details in the file and detailed analysis of impacts to the waters of the US was also not covered in the EIS because the developers stated that they did not have a clear enough design for where the development was going to occur. So all of that is still kind of up in the air. And last comment is when the site certificate defines the survey area as the boundary of the development, and you have these setback issues around water resources and around wildlife resources, you're going to be, you're not going to be finding everything you need to be finding as far as protections that are required in the Forest Practices Act because you're not looking at a big enough area to include these setbacks. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Gilbert? Okay, thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Any other individuals in the room that wish to provide testimony that don't have any other slips? Nancy, could you check the webinar and phone to see if there's any other members of the public that wish to provide testimony?
Thank you, Vice Chair. At this time, I'll just give you, the people on the phone, a way to raise their hand. If you would like to look at the bottom of the participant window, there is a, at the bottom of the main window, there's a set of icons that says participant. Click on that window, it will make your hand raised, and when you are done, you can click it again to lower it. If you're participating by phone, press star three on your telephone keypad to raise your hand, and then star three again on your telephone keypad to lower your hand. I am not seeing any hands raised at this moment. Let's give them a minute or two to kind of figure out how to go through that process. I am still not seeing any hands.
Okay, we've given a pretty good opportunity there. So it appears no one is requesting to. So could you go to the next slide, please? Are there any council members that wish, or that would like to provide comments to the department or the certificate holder?
My apologies. Understand this question might be a little bit more complex than I would understand at this point, but having used a lot of maps before and having the source documents for those maps and realizing in my history, sometimes those source files were relatively large, not to basically just post them, but could we make them available to parties? Is there a way to make a source file available? I mean, obviously, the maps we have were produced from a file. But it's, there also might be a question what the resolution of that underlying file is also. Because, you know, I've seen this before, is that maps are generally relatively small when they are presented. Their resolution as printed is not particularly high, so if you just increase the size of them, they just get more and more fuzzy. So is there any way to provide a source file if applicant or a party contesting a case requires a source file?
Vice Chair Howe. For the record, Todd Cornet, can we take a five-minute break so I can look into your question, Councilmember Devlin? So I do have an answer for you right now. I know under the original application, Idaho Power had like a full website where you could look at, you know, the entire mapping, you know, of the entire facility. I'm just not as familiar with Amendment Number One, so if we could take a five-minute break, I can seek out the information you've asked.
Okay, we'll break till, what, 6:30, 5:00, and come back.
Okay, thank you.
And we've got Ms. Tardyweather will explain and answer to Counselor Devlin's question.
For the record, Kellin Tardyweather, to the extent that I understand the question you're just asking, if we have like maps that you can toggle in and out to get more detail of the facility? So we do have our online map available on our webpage, and there's a link on the project webpage. So Nancy, could you click on the little, on the elbow, apparently that's what I'm going to call it forever now, just on the bend portion, click on that. So that part is associated with RFA 1. And then Nancy, now click on the other route. Right, and so it says proposed in there, and click on that, and that is the approved route. And then Nancy, can you zoom in? And then with this, you can change, you know, this has a little bit of limitations as a tool, but you can change the base map. So you could, right now, this is just kind of like the standard topo base map, but you can add aerial imagery on it as a base map. Zoom in closer, so we can zoom in closer to see what level of detail.
For the record, Todd Cornet, you're not really being able to see the topographical lines on the screen, they get washed out a little bit, but on the mapping tool, you can actually see the topographical lines.
If you change the base map to aerial, I mean, some. Nancy, do you know how to change the base map? Yeah. See if we can get, and there's a little bit of a delay with the connection here, so do imagery, it's the first row on the first row, top right. So does that help? And then zoom in a little bit if you can, Nancy?
There's going to be, okay, yeah.
No, that's okay, I think that this is what we.
It takes a while for the file to completely load.
Correct, right. But we are just demonstrating what is available, to get more specificity.
So Councilmember Devlin, is that kind of what your question was?
It answers my question in the sense that there are tools available.
Okay.
If people, you know, would take a degree of effort and a degree of understanding also to be able to do this, but there are tools available. And when you went in relatively closely, what's your scale? Can you see it? My eyes are not that great. When you go in closely, it should, over on the left, it should say like 1 inch to 1,000 feet or?
It has a scale, it's just hard to see on our screen right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And hopefully, maybe we can.
It depends, you might have to toggle in between your base maps. Sometimes when you have the aerial imagery, you lose some of the road and creek names and features on the landscape, but if you went back to the topo map, it would have some of those.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Tardyweather.
Thank you.
Any other council members that would like to provide comments to the department or certificate holder? Counselor Condon.
Thank you, Vice Chair Howe, Cindy Condon for the record. And Kellin, just a quick question, I'm not familiar with the Forest Practices Act, not sure it's even within the scope of this hearing, but could you speak a little bit? I don't remember any reading about the Forest Practices Act as it relates to this large project. Can you just comment on, I'm assuming everybody's required to abide by the law, but could you just speak to that?
Yeah, and Idaho Power may have more representation, but I can represent what we said in the final order because we did look into the Forest Practices Act because, you know, way back when, there was some plan that was part of the application, and so we looked at it and talked to Oregon Department of Forestry and worked with them. And then ultimately, there's a blurb in the final order that council didn't assert jurisdiction under the Forest Practices Act, but the certificate holder nonetheless needs to comply with those laws, they're Oregon laws, and that's contemplated with council standards, but council doesn't assert jurisdiction over it.
Thank you.
Other counselors? Counselor Byer?
Thank you, Vice Chair Howe. Just for the record, if in the proposed order, we can reference the mapping tool just in the future, one for the public, but also for council members, so that we trigger that response and go in and say that there is enough detail, and then we can query, you know, whether there are stream crossings or whatever. I think that would be useful just to reference the material that's in the actual application, which you probably have done, but it didn't click for me until now. And then the other thing I want to just make sure I'm understanding correctly, based on the proposed order, is that none of the proposed roads involve any stream crossings and didn't trigger any Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife concerns, is that correct?
Well, none of the roads or routes triggered fish passage. And so it's, and it's a little, and I'm really, I'm sorry, I don't have my computer, because normally I would just be pulling things up and sharing it. And I think, it's like, I think it would be good to pull up a map to see the level of detail they're at. It also depends on what map you're looking at, right? So we have maps that just have the, like, the maps that just show the roads and the routes, kind of show, depending on what the information requirement is, the maps show different things. So if you're just looking at the maps with the roads, you have some landscapes things, and then identifies the roads. If you're looking at the property owner list, it then shows tax lots, right, with property owners. Now, with stream, to answer the stream crossings, the first place I would go to are the map sets associated with the wetland delineations and the removal fill section, right? Because those are maps that are intended to show streams, waterways, and delineated wetlands. So I would pull up those maps. And that is generally, when we talk about jurisdiction, that's, you know, DSL and the council are under the removal fill permit, that's where we would look at that issue.
Thank you.
If that helps.
For the record, Todd Cornet, one more response, one of your comments. In the notice, we do provide, we always reference the mapping tool. In our notice, we also reference the exhibits where it has the typical maps to make sure that people have that sort of orientation. Again, the maps in the, in this case, the amendment, but specifically the mapping tool so people can get in, you know, and get further and use the, you know, at their sort of leisure and availability, we get it, it's not necessarily as, you know, as obvious in some projects as others, but still, it's all there and the description's there.
Thank you.
Secretary Cornet, are there any other comments from council? Okay, hearing done, then, next slide, please. Based on the comments received tonight and on the record, does the certificate holder wish to respond or request to extend the record to respond? Okay, I saw a head nod no. So with that, the next slide, please. The time is now 6:46, and I'll gavel this closed. July 17th, 2023, the public hearing on the draft proposed order for the ordnance to Hemingway transmission line request for Amendment One is rescheduled until tomorrow evening at 5:30 at the Oxford Inn Suite Conference Room in Pendleton, Oregon. And now, the time is 6:46, and the July 17th through 19th, 2023 meeting of the Energy Facility Siting Council is now recessed until tomorrow evening at 4:00.